Tonight's flag salute will be led by the Central High School JROTC, under the direction of Commander Lawrence Benzel. Please stand as we prepare for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the posting of the colors.
Color guard, post.
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
Marshall, will you introduce tonight's cadets?
Central High School, our instructor is Senior Chief Cam, Commander Benzel, with Principal Jason Gilli. The pledge leader was Angel Williams, color guard Carlos Marshall, Kishon West, Cam Brockman, and Antonio Ramsey. We certainly thank them for being here with us tonight and their presentation.
Thank you, gentlemen. And ladies.
I want to remind everyone wishing to address the board, there is a five-minute limit, and you'll need to see the clerk. Ms. Cindy Hutchings here on the end to let her know you plan to speak to an agenda item. Before I consider a motion to adopt the agenda, are there any changes, Dr. Gist?
No, Madam President, we have no changes to tonight's agenda.
I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I'll call for the vote. Ms. Shelton?
Aye.
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 Aye. With that, we'll move on to recognizing our visitors. We have a full house tonight. Excited for you all to be here to see the State of the District video. There's a lot of buzz about it, so excited to see it myself. I think the board members will be sharing, seeing it with you for the first time as well. I know we have our former board member in the House, Dr. Lon Turner Addison, and many other important folks who I'm sure I'm not seeing, but welcome everyone. We'll move on to our special presentations from there. Tonight, we have the Tulsa Metro Chamber's 2018 One Voice Regional Legislative Agenda, which includes educational support at both the state and federal levels. Some of the education issues include restoring education funding and addressing the teacher shortage, I'm happy to say. So before I ask for a motion, I want to introduce Zach Stoykoff, Director of Government Affairs for the Tulsa Regional Chamber. He's here tonight to speak about the agenda and to respond to any questions board members may have. So, thank you, Zach.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, and Dr. Gist. I am very proud to present to you today the product of several months of work from more than 500 representatives of our area business community, education communities, nonprofits, and economic development communities. The 2018 One Voice Agenda is the 10th One Voice Agenda since we have started the One Voice Agenda, and this really represents a public-private partnership between a wide breadth of organizations that really represent the views of our region and the priorities that they'd like our state and federal legislators to tackle in the coming year. Particularly proud of the education items that we have before you, as you can see, and as President Schreiber mentioned, this agenda is very heavy on education this year. Addressing the teacher shortage is key. We also call for increased public education funding and additional items such as creating a sustainable budget that I think we all would agree at the state level is critical to the success of our schools and the future of our workforce which the business community relies upon. I'd particularly like to thank and congratulate TPS. We had a large representative of TPS staffers and leaders who helped craft this One Voice Agenda and provided the expertise and insight necessary for our leaders to really develop issues that not only represent our region but are accurate and sustainable and can help us articulate those priorities to legislators. So, kudos to Dr. Gist and her team, and President Schreiber, and thank you for all you've done and your months of work in this process and in the previous years. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, board members? Mr. Percival?
I'm just ready to move approval.
Well, I'll entertain-
Can I make a motion?
You may.
I move approval.
Any questions? Well, before we, before I call for the vote, I'd just like to say that I see many people here in the audience that attended. Ms. Shawna Mott Wright, myself, I see Wes Mitchell leading the Education Task Force for the Chamber, Ms. Shannon. We all attended multiple meetings thinking about this agenda, and it's good to know that we have a really strong, strong support from the Tulsa community and the whole region for a really robust package that supports education at the state level. So, thank you all very much for driving that work and letting us be a part of it. We appreciate it. With that, I'll call for the vote. Ms. Shelton?
Aye.
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 Aye. That brings us to Item D. We'll approve the minutes of the October 2nd, 2017 regular and the August 17th, 2017 special meetings of the board. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
I'll call for the vote. Ms. Fate?
Aye.
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 Aye. Brings us to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I'll call for the vote, provided that there's no questions regarding the consent agenda. Ms. Fate?
Aye.
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 Aye. Move to the action agenda. It's not going to go this fast all night, people. Appreciate this. We have three items to consider on the action agenda this evening. Begin with F1, which is a recommendation to enter into a consulting agreement with Collaborative for Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning to provide support services for systemic social and emotional learning implementation from the date of execution through August 31st, 2018. The cost is $150,000. It's from a grant account, and this is something that is an agreement to provide an extension of services that were provided through the Wallace Foundation Planning Grant and will continue through the implementation phase of this grant. The partners will assist and advise Tulsa Public Schools in the implementation of social-emotional learning strategies and the gathering of social-emotional learning assessment data. These strategies will be used to strengthen systems and site-level activities for our students. This item is being submitted for consideration on the action agenda in order to preserve the continuity of the collaboration between Tulsa Public Schools and the collaborative. Are there any questions regarding this? Oh, actually, I'll take a motion first. I apologize. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
I just wanted to clarify that, so this is funded through the Wallace Grant. Is that correct, or is this something in addition to that?
That is correct.
Okay.
Any further questions? I'll call for the vote. Ms. Shelton?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
We'll move to F2. This is an approval to enter into agreements with the Cherokee Nation, Creek Nation, and Oklahoma Department of Human Services for the reimbursement of expenses associated with the district's provision of before and after-care services to children who have been designated as eligible to receive such services as the elementary schools listed below from October 1st, 2017 through September 30th, 2018. And the recommendation further recommends extension of the term of the DHS agreement from June 30, 2017 through September 30, 2017, approved on the June 20, 2016 agenda. The schools involved are Bell, Mayo, Eisenhower, McClure, Elliott, Patrick Henry, Grimes, Robertson, Grissom, Salk, Hoover, Skelly, Key, Wright, Lanier, Zero, and Lee. Are there questions regarding this item? Excuse me. I'm going to get it right. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Are there questions regarding this item? No questions? Then I'll call for the vote. Ms. Fate?
Aye.
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 Aye. Move on to F3. Also a post-factum approval to revise the contract with Hartspring Residential School, Wichita, Kansas, to provide educational and residential services to a student from August 31st, 2017 through November 15th, 2017. The cost is not to exceed $80,000. And we have discussed matters of this type before, and I believe this particular issue, but the student has educational and social-emotional needs that exceed the capacity of the district. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions on the matter? I'll call for the vote. Ms. Shelton?
Aye.
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 Aye. We're going to move into our information agenda, and I'll turn this portion over to Dr. Gist.
Thank you, Madam President, and good evening, board members, and those who are joining us here in the Solomon Room, and also who, anyone who might be joining us electronically. I'll remind you that information items are brought before the board for their consideration. No action is taken on information items. Any action that would happen on these items would come at a future meeting before the board as either a consent item or an action item. Items G1 through G9 will be presented by our Chief Talent and Learning Officer, Devin Fletcher. Mr. Fletcher?
Thank you, Dr. Gist, Madam President, members of the board. Items G1 through G5 support our instructional leadership directors and the teams of schools that they support in athletics, and are routine in nature. I'd like to call your attention to Item G2, which is a recommendation to pay College Board for AP exams for students at Edison Preparatory High School during the 2017-2018 school year. This item is at no cost to the district. Approximately 600 exams are given, which are prepaid by students, at a cost of $97 per exam. And the reason I call your attention to that is that all schools work with College Board for AP exams, and so you'll see separate agenda items come through each from the Student Activities Fund, so I just wanted you to be aware of that for the future. Items G6 through G9 support the work for our Talent Management Department. Item G6 is to approve the adjunct status of one class during the 2017-2018 school year as required by the Oklahoma State Department of Education, and this is routine in nature. Item G6 is to, item G7 and G8 are routine in nature, and this is to provide life insurance and long-term disability insurance for the district-eligible employees. Both of these items are currently in the proposal phase, and we will bring back the cost and source of funding when the items come to you on consent. For the members on the Talent Management Committee, this is one of the items that we spoke with you about. It's three years. Every three years, we go out to bid, and so we've done that, and we'll bring that back to you in the upcoming weeks. Item G9 is a recommendation to create a new position of a program manager, which is funded through the Wallace Foundation Grant, and this role will serve in supporting before and after care. I'd be happy to discuss any questions you may have.
Any questions from the board?
Thank you so much, Mr. Fletcher. Items G10 and G11 will be presented by our Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Noberto Delgadoio. Mr. Delgadoio?
Good evening, Dr. Gist and President Schreiber and members of the board. With respect to G10, recommendation to approve the sanctioning of the following booster clubs and parent-teacher associations according with Board Policy 5707 for the 2017-2018 years. You guys can see there are several there, folks that actually support our schools and programs. There is no cost to the district, and the rationale, sanction status provides organization exemption from the statutory controls relating to school activity funds found in the Oklahoma School Code. And the board made sanctions associations and clubs that advance the educational objectives of the district are beneficial to the students, and under the guidelines established in the board policy. So, these organizations have submitted their required information in support of their applications. And with respect to G11, this is a recommendation to enter an agreement with the City of Tulsa pursuant to the Oklahoma Development Act for a six-year abatement of the district's part of the ad valorem tax for the proposed First Place Garage development on 410 South Boston Avenue. And the rationale for this abatement is to, during the six, excuse me, during the six-year abatement, the district will continue to receive taxes for, at the 2017 level, of approximately $108,000. The abatement's based on the increase in values and taxes. The First Place Garage will have approximately 3,000 square feet of retail space on the first floor, and this is excluded from the abatement. Therefore, once the first floor retail space is completed and operating, the district will receive an estimated $1,600 in annual retail tax. After completion of the six-year abatement period, the First Place Garage property will come back onto the tax rolls, and then the appraised, will come back at the tax rolls at the then-appraised value, and the district will begin receiving taxes based on the levels against, against the levies against the higher property values. Projected completed ad valorem for this project is 202,000, so resulting, it would result in an increase of approximately $92,273. And I do have additional information that I'd like to share with the board that further shows a comparison between some of the actual tax levies compared to what was originally forecasted. So, there'll be information that will be coming out in the next day as well that further goes show that the actual potential is higher for additional tax levies for the, additional ad valorem for the district. But I will take a moment to answer any questions board members may have.
Could you help us understand the rationale behind how this benefits the district? So, if we did not approve an abatement, then we receive that additional tax immediately rather than delaying six years. So, could you help us understand why, why it's in our best interest to accept the abatement?
Yeah, absolutely. So, the idea here is around opportunity cost and the willingness for a developer to pursue development in the giving area. And when there are specific incentives for a developer to pursue development, it really not only helps that specific project to move forward, but also helps the surrounding areas and neighborhoods or commercial businesses, whatnot, also increase value. So, it's not only an incentive to really take advantage of what the ad valorem tax potential is in the future, but it's an opportunity to increase the ad valorem tax of the businesses around there. And the other key thing is also just understanding the temperament or the willingness of developers to pursue this. So, it's give and take in the ability to decide whether or not to give an abatement and lose any potential for an increase in ad valorem. And with that in mind, it's the recommendation to pursue it to avoid losing the potential ad valorem there.
Thank you.
Sure. You're welcome.
Thank you so much, Ms. Shelton, for those clarifying questions, and Mr. Delgadoio for that report. Our final item tonight is Item G12, and this is a recommendation to approve Amendment 6B with Trigon General Contractors and Construction Managers Incorporated. This is for the interior renovations at Lindbergh Elementary School at a guaranteed maximum price of $54,029.46. Just to be clear, 46 cents. Okay. Additional lockers and painting are needed to complete the project, and our Executive Director of Bond Projects, Mr. Chris Hudgens, is available to answer any questions board members might have. Thanks. That concludes the presentation of our information items tonight, Madam President.
So, we will move on then to staff reports. Like I said, I think we have a very exciting staff report this evening.
Yes, we do have a big staff report this evening, Madam President and members of the board, and, and very excited to be sharing with you our State of the District presentation. Now, typically, this presentation would be shared by a very long PowerPoint presentation and the sound of my voice for a long period of time. We're actually going to spare you that because of the creativity of the wonderful people in Tulsa Public Schools. We have a video to share. I want you to be prepared that it's, it's a pretty long video because it is, like I said, it's taking the place of a report, but I'm confident that it will continue to capture your attention and it will provide you with updates on the goals that we have had for our performance for our first year of implementation of Destination Excellence, which was last year, and give you an overview of the places where we were successful and the places where we missed the mark and what we're doing about that. I am extraordinarily proud of the members of Team Tulsa and the hard work that happens at every part of this organization. And so, I'm going to stop talking, let the video speak for itself, and then I have a few acknowledgements after we see the video.
Two years ago, we worked together as a community to create Destination Excellence. Our five-year plan to make sure that every single student in Tulsa receives a world-class public education. We set forth a series of activities and goals and projects that we wanted to do to take the great work already happening here in Tulsa and make it even better. I'm very excited to share that we saw incredible gains in our graduation rates again. We had a five percentage point increase in our graduation rate, which is now 72.5%.
All of the effort and time and commitment to these students paid off.
Had some great leadership in the past. We just continued to keep rolling and making, making gains.
And I was thankful for the people that work at our school.
Really, the system's starting to turn into a fine-oiled machine.
Now, we know we have a long way to go. We want all of our students in Tulsa Public Schools to earn their high school diploma. We know the country's graduation rate on average is 83%. So, we know we have work to do, but we're very pleased with the momentum that we've seen here in Tulsa.
Well, we work on that graduation rate all year long. We work to make sure that our kids have individualized attention so that they can get through high schools successfully.
Principal Shelley Holman and the team at Webster saw an increase of 14.7 percentage points.
We are the leaders. We're actually trailblazers in a system that we use called an early morning indicator system. And we look at students and make sure that they are on track with attendance behavior and coursework. This, this play B.C.s. And once we identify those students that are in jeopardy of one of those three things, not meeting expectations or the goals, then we make sure that someone champions that student. By champion, I mean, they follow up, they talk to the student, they meet with a parent. We bring them into the admin team and the support team.
Principal Nikki Dennis and the Rogers Ropers increased their graduation rate by 12.6 percentage points.
So, one of the things that we really did is make sure that every kid was really cognizant of where they were and how many credits they'd earned and how many credits they needed. The other thing we did is really ratchet up the conversations with parents. And I think getting parents in the door and getting, having them sit down and find out what the kid needs to graduate, and having the kid and the parent at the table with the principal and the counselor makes a huge difference.
Principal Jason Gilli and the Central High School team had an 8.1 percentage point increase in graduates.
One thing we do is really focus on relationships. That's more so like, hey, I, I care about you. I want to know you as a, as a student as a whole, not just your academics. I want to know what's going on in your life. I want to have an impact on you. We don't want to just be their teacher. We want to be, I want to be Mr. Gilli inside the school and outside the school. I want you to know who Mr. Gilli is. I want you to see me in the community. Graduate to Greatness is a program in which every senior has a mentor teacher that they are coached with through all of their high school requirements.
Principal Michelle Butler and her teachers and staff worked to increase the graduation rate at the Tulsa Met by 16.7 percentage points.
What we did was meet the students where they are. We took a very serious look at the courses they were missing, the amount of time it was going to take, and came up with an individualized plan for each student, and then we met with the student and their parent and laid it out. There was no mystery. It was very clear. They knew exactly what they had to get done. They were far too close to it.
And the team at McLean saw 12.2 percentage point increase on graduation, and I know that Principal John Williams and his team are excited to continue that excellent work.
Our teachers and school leaders kept a relentless focus on making sure that every single student had the supports needed to be successful, and almost every one of our secondary schools saw gains in their graduation rate.
I don't want to make high school graduation our goal. I want to go beyond that. I want to make sure the kids are, have a plan for how they want to have, how they want to have their livelihood, how they want to be successful, how they want to be happy. We don't fail because we aim high and miss. We fail because we aim, aim low and hit.
Powerful learning experiences require exceptional teachers, strong curriculum, and high-quality texts and other classroom materials.
You can see they're enjoying it.
It's all about building vocabulary and background knowledge and getting exposed to things that they might never be exposed to.
It was so exciting, and the teachers, I tell them, you get out of it what you put into it. And that's my motto. It's your boat, you make it float.
I'm seeing big turnarounds, they're being able to sound out their words.
The students like doing the Amplify much better than they liked our traditional textbook.
It's a very good curriculum because it starts with the basics and just gradually comes up, and it doesn't skip anything.
To increase academic rigor and advance student achievement, our teachers work with new curricula for English Language Arts, Amplify, and Core Knowledge. Over the year, we visited classrooms to understand these new resources and how they were being used. And by the end of the year, we saw an increase from 32% to 63% of classes where students were engaging with high-quality texts, far surpassing our original goal of 42%.
When we talk about growth, it's not just reading scores that we're seeing growth, it is their identity as a reader is growing.
We're meeting them truly on, like a personalized level. We know exactly where each student is with the assessments, and you're meeting them right where they need to be met in order to fill those gaps.
It is challenging for the students. It's challenging for the teacher, but if you just put it as a communal activity, we're learning this together. It is amazing what happens in my classroom.
Kristy Harmon, Stephanie Peppers, Leslie Parr, and Rebecca Halfaker are just a few of the teachers who are seeing success in their classrooms.
It really helps them having these real literature-based passages to compare their writing with.
It really starts with the basics of reading in kindergarten.
Such a structure to it that any teacher can come in and teach it.
Amplify ELA is an all-online curriculum for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade.
Exposing them to more complex ideas and things of such, and the kids seem to love the curriculum.
First graders cannot read complex texts, but they can listen and discuss complex text. Phonics and letter sounds and like building that really strong foundation of reading so that they can eventually get to the point, you know, when they're in third or fourth grade, that they can read the complex text.
The stories, like in listening and learning, they're so engaging, and the kids love them. And what happens is like, if you're in kindergarten, you get a certain part kind of of the story or the genre, and then the next year, you get another part, and it just builds on, on each other.
So, their writing is showing great improvement because we're not just sitting here giving them rules to write. They get to see it, and then they get to-
They get to see it, and then they get to practice.
The stories are stories that the kids enjoy. They're not bored of them. They're not just laying down in their chairs.
They are writing more, they're writing deeper, they're writing their thoughts, they're more thoughtful and reflective in their writing, too.
Some are classics and some are just some texts that are at a much higher level than what they have been used to reading.
They have seen the growth of the students, and they are happy.
The students feel like they're learning much more by doing the Amplify than what they did last year.
We're going to start seeing a lot of gains in two to three years because it just starts with very, very basic things in kindergarten. It helps the kids who may be struggling readers, like they can feel successful. They can participate. They don't have to be able to read the book. We all listen to the book. We all talked about it. They can feel successful in a way that they might not ever feel successful.
We did not move the needle last year on student attendance. We wanted to, and we know we needed to. We know it's incredibly important for student achievement and success. And we had plans. We had efforts underway.
Transportation is one of those hindrances to attendance.
Oftentimes, what we hear from our students is that the parents are either dropping off late or can't get the students to school, period.
Like anything, poor attendance can become a bad habit.
It's so very important that we put a lot more time into communication to our schools, information and communication to our families.
What we found when we looked back into this to see what happened, we had a number of different teams working on this effort, but we didn't have clear ownership. We didn't have the kind of coordination that we really needed in order to see the change.
We definitely knew that attendance was critical. I think that just having a department to say, all right, part of our day and work is going to be dedicated to strategic planning around attendance, lifting it to a level where all schools are getting a common message.
Every day, every student that's absent, we're making a phone call.
The counselor sees whether the kids are there or not. If they're not there, they give them a phone call. Why weren't you here? What's up?
Put a laser-like focus on our students who are missing school and for whatever reasons those are, finding out the why behind why our students are not coming, and then exactly what it is that we need to do to support our families with getting students to school every day.
This school provides emotional supports, counselors, therapists, and teachers that will work with the students.
As I used to tell my students, mistakes are wonderful opportunities to learn. So we've made changes there. We've increased clarity and ownership and focus. We're continuing some of the same activities, but we have actually even some new ones as well.
Some of them, there are needing resources to help them get to school, so we can offer a number of things, like obviously if a student has an ID, they can ride the Metro bus anytime.
Tulsa Transit is definitely an option, just them better understanding how to use that and utilize that, also better understanding how the bus system in Tulsa Public, just our transportation works.
I think one of the other things is that partnership with the county. They provide the transportation from the main bus hub. Sometimes they'll provide transportation from the house.
And so what we're doing this year with a cross-functional team led by Executive Director of Student and Family Support Services, Dr. Ebony Johnson, is to continue some strong efforts to add some new actions and importantly, better coordinate to increase student achievement.
So we've been able to bring in various departments, and we have a cross-functional team of individuals. All of the principals have set either an aggressive goal around attendance, an incremental goal around attendance, or a moderate goal of increasing attendance.
We are seeing that more students are getting here, and more students are getting here on time.
I just don't think that that amount of time and effort was put in last year, and it is being done now.
Some of the programs that they have instituted have been really good.
Making sure our attendance clerks can really read the dashboard and know how to use that. Our parent facilitators are being trained. Our principals have been trained.
The parent facilitator has been huge. We're looking at those dashboards. The attendance office has been huge in helping to look at those dashboards to see who the students are that we need to focus on.
One of the great things we have here that we can learn from each other within the district is to work as a team, and that it takes a really wraparound approach to be successful.
To already see that some schools are making those gains like Nathan Hale.
That's the best reward. I mean, that's the best reward. You know there's nothing better because you know that you might have helped that student change their path and become successful and happier as a person. So you can't beat that.
Before we started this journey to Destination Excellence, we saw out-of-school suspensions resulting in 8,000 suspensions. And so we set a goal, a goal of a decrease of out-of-school suspensions of 5%. We actually ended up the year with a decrease of 26.5%.
We have seen a great turn in regard to students gaining knowledge about controlling their own outcomes.
We found that many times our students that were having trouble being successful in class behaviorally had other situations that were external, things that didn't really have much to do with school.
Now, we know that out-of-school suspensions are sometimes necessary, but we wanted to be sure that our school teams worked to identify and create alternatives to suspensions that provide appropriate behavioral interventions while keeping our students learning.
We created an area called our Success Center. And instead of kicking the kids out for, for example, it could be any suspendable offense, instead of saying, okay, you're going home, no, you're getting placed in the Success Center for three, or five, or 10 days.
We have a social worker that has been really proactive in connecting with families and doing home visits to identify resources that the school can help with and supports that we can put in place. We also use some of our title money to purchase an academic engagement teacher, and she has been instrumental in helping students that need to be out of the classroom to develop strategies to successfully re-enter and be able to sustain through restorative practices, giving students a place just to calm down, learning how to recognize their emotions.
Eugene Field Elementary, East Central High School, and McClure Elementary are just a few of the schools that use restorative practices to reduce out-of-school suspensions.
I think that one of the unique things about it is that I put it in for certified teachers in the core subjects. And usually it's like a one to eight ratio, so those kids really get a lot of more closer teaching than maybe a normal classroom, which they need.
Sometimes a student doesn't need to be in class. Sometimes that's not the safest place for them to be. So the things that we've already done, we're going to continue, but I think the strongest step we can take next is to continue to invest in our teachers to build their capacities. I have 13 new teachers to my building this year. It's hard to learn multiple methodologies for the first time, and McClure's a hard place to start. But I'm confident we have the people that share our mindset, and so I know they'll
Teaching is without a doubt the best job in the world, but it is also extraordinarily difficult. We know also that those first few years are even more challenging. Nationally, 50% of new teachers leave the classroom within the first five years. We lose new teachers. And so we knew that here in Tulsa Public Schools, we needed to make an extra effort to put supports in for our brand-new teachers, to help them to be successful in their work, but also to ensure that more of them, because of that success and because of the support, more of them were staying in our classrooms every year.
Teaching is really difficult, but it's a very joyous job if you bring the right kind of enthusiasm and passion into it. And it was difficult, but TPS also provided me with a mentor teacher, and I have great administration here and a lot of support from other teachers at my site. So that made the transition from college life into actual teaching much easier, I think, than maybe some other people experienced.
Some obstacles that I faced mainly were, I think, classroom management. I kind of, I struggled in it a little bit because the simple fact that when you're in college, they teach you how to teach. They don't necessarily teach you how to deal with behavior issues and that kind of thing. And then also, one thing I struggled with was helping kids who aren't necessarily on grade level. That was, it didn't catch me off guard, but that was an obstacle.
We also know that Oklahoma has a massive teacher shortage. We are not, as a state, doing what we need to do for our teachers and to support them and to compensate them as the professionals they are. And because we lose so many novice teachers, we wanted to focus on our novice teachers. So we set an explicit goal that we are going to increase our retention of our novice teachers by three percentage points. Now unfortunately, even though 95% of our novice teachers indicated they were satisfied with the supports that we were providing them in their early years, we were not able to meet our goal of increasing our retention of novice teachers by three percentage points.
There have been a few times where, you know, after some rough days, it's kind of, why, why am I here? And then I start, you know, I start thinking to myself, you know, it's because of the kids.
There were times when I didn't know if I made the right decision to go into education. For example, last year, my second year, and this was a consensus throughout the district. It was just a really rough year for most teachers due to budget cuts, due to limited staff in the building, and teachers just being out.
Financial reasons are a big factor. They're simply not receiving salaries that make it manageable for them to continue teaching and it be the only job that they have.
So as a result of missing the mark on that particular goal, we've amped up our efforts even more and included additional supports for our brand-new teachers. And we're just going to do even more to double down on making sure that our new teachers know that Tulsa is a great place to be, that the supports are there for them, and that we want them to stay here as a part of Team Tulsa.
We offer professional development opportunities for them on an ongoing basis, both pre-service before they start and then ongoing throughout the year.
The no-nonsense nurturing one that they did last summer changed my life. I implemented it last year and saw fantastic results.
My favorite thing now is when I'm able to positive narrate. I have just learned that it's just a tool that can turn a classroom of 20 kids all on their own agenda.
With my mentor teacher, she recommended several professional development sessions that I went to, and I was able to train with her and several other teachers and instructional coaches over the summer after my first year. And that really, I think, pushed me and prepared me for my second year.
I definitely do it for the kids. I know where I'm needed, and this is the place where I think I should be and where I want to be more than that.
Our district office here at Tulsa Public Schools exists only to be in service. That's why we're here. We're here to make sure that those closest to our children are successful. And unfortunately, we've missed the mark on this work. We have made it a focus of our efforts here in Tulsa Public Schools, but we are still not getting that particular work done yet.
Teachers want to know, like, what are we aiming for, right?
Asking them, what is it that you need and want?
For teachers and principals and ultimately the students to feel supported.
We've heard from our teachers and school leaders, and we've listened. We're putting their feedback and insights into practice. This year, we're holding regular district days of service.
To help them in getting prepared for schools, one in which we're thinking about around test time so we can be helpful for the proctors and make sure they have what they need. We are listening. We are here. And to make sure that everyone feels valued, everyone feels like they have a part, and that we're all in this together, because we are Team Tulsa.
We've also launched a service culture initiative across the entire district office. We set out to do four teacher institutes. We did large groups of like groups. So for example, we put all the second-grade teachers in the district in one room, and our feedback was less than stellar. What we found out pretty quickly is that teachers didn't like the big groups. Listening to teachers' feedback on the smaller group sizes and more intimate settings really leads to a much more productive professional learning for teachers. Throughout our district, teachers, school leaders, and staff are using our 15 data dashboards to leverage real-time data to inform decision-making.
So the data dashboards are created from the ground up in collaboration with teachers and principals.
They were created to pull all of the data that we have from different systems to one place for teachers.
Really a one-stop to get all my data on. It's very convenient.
I just found it really easy to use, and so it's actually bookmarked on my browser here, so I can just click on it, sign in, and find what I need to find.
Went out to principals, asked what's working, what's not, what do we need to change?
My thing is just going to make it easier to identify areas where we're weak as a
At Tulsa Public Schools, we've really sought to say, we're going to find problems where they originated and then work through them.
We accept the fact that we do not know near as much about what principals and teachers need as principals and teachers do.
We've aligned our staffing, services, and programs around the needs of our schools. And we've had a serious focus now on how customer service is going to be at the core of everything we do. We must continue to improve. We must do more, even with less.
Really honing in on the resources that teachers use daily in their classrooms and being very targeted and specific about the professional learning that we bring to them.
And there will be training for district office staff in the upcoming future so we can improve the customer service and improve district office service culture throughout the year. So this is just the beginning. You haven't seen anything yet.
We are absolutely committed to continuous growth and improvement. And I'm really excited to see the way in which a laser-like focus on customer service, combined with a modernized district office, can better serve our teachers and students in Tulsa and therefore result in improved academic achievement for all of our students. We had a wonderful first year of implementation of Destination Excellence. We saw tremendous successes, and we had areas where we didn't make the progress that we wanted to make, but really good work was happening. So we're going to take all of that. We're going to take what worked, what didn't work, what we learned. We're going to use all of that to make sure that Year Two of Destination Excellence Thank you. So I want to say just a big, big congratulations and thanks to our communications team for pulling that together. We also have, some of the stars of the video are here. So I saw Asia Wirtham, who is here, who is one of our teachers. Welcome and thank you for making your voice heard on our video and for being with us tonight. We also have Kristy Harmon, who's here, and her mom and dad are here. And I was sharing with them before the meeting that it's been such an honor to get to be in Kristy's classroom a number of times, so we're glad to have Kristy here. Of course, our own Dr. Ebony Johnson, Charlotte Manning, Stephen Fedor, and a number of others. I'm sure I'm leaving people off, but big thanks to everyone on the team for the incredibly hard work that you do every day. And we are truly doing more with less in Tulsa Public Schools, and we're up for that challenge, and I'm really pleased with the results. We know what we need to do to improve in the areas where we didn't meet the mark, and we are already underway in Year Two of implementation to make sure that that happens. So that concludes our staff report tonight, Madam President.
Well, thank you, Dr. Gess. I think the video was worth the hype that came with it, and I appreciate personally just the frankness and the transparency of it and really putting the personalized story to it. I think it helps the public and even the Board really internalize better our goals and the work that's going on out in the district. So I appreciate it very much. We'll move on to Board member reports and concerns. Are there any Board member reports? I'll quickly report out on our community advisory, reviewing the school and building names throughout the district. They had their first meeting on October 9th, and so that was last week. Great attendance, almost full participation from all of the 30-plus members. I think that's the right number. And the work is being led by three facilitators, Tamara Leback, Dr. Carlos Hill from OU, and Hannibal Johnson. And the community... And the community advisory was put into small task force groups where they're going to do work on evaluating school building names throughout the district, and then they'll come back together in small groups, and then in November, they'll meet again. So looking forward to that work continuing, and we will continue to report out on how that is going. Regarding our citizen comments, we have none at this time. We will have some pertaining to an agenda item later. That brings us to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. So I wanted to spend some time tonight talking with you about our state assessment results. As many of you are aware, the Oklahoma Department of Education, State Department of Education, recently released the statewide results from the first administration of the state assessments under the new Oklahoma academic standards. The state's new standards are intended to be aligned with college and career-ready expectations, and they include more challenging items and place a greater emphasis on higher-level thinking than in the past. So this is a brand-new assessment, and the 2017 results will set a baseline for us for academic performance that we can use for our future comparisons, for future-year comparisons. It is really important to step forward for our state. This is a step in the right direction for Oklahoma to set state standards that allow us to understand how our students are performing compared to higher expectations, and also for us to make sure that we're setting the bar at a level that ensures that our students will be successful when they leave us after high school graduation. Even though these changes have been taking place here in Oklahoma, and any educator, and probably parents too, will tell you that it's been a bit of a roller coaster here in Oklahoma with different standards and expectations, we now have these new standards. We have a new assessment to go with them. But all the time this has been going on, Tulsa has kept a laser focus on college and career-ready standards, and we've continued to maintain that high bar for academic growth and overall performance. So we're confident that the materials that we have provided to teachers, the professional development that we're providing to teachers, and other supports are aligned with these higher expectations, but we'll obviously continue to monitor that closely. We are going to continue to use the, what's called the MAP assessment results, as well as other items like our SAT results. And also, we have a developing district performance framework. We're going to use all of these to make sure that we're measuring student achievement, that we're informing our decisions based on how our students are doing, and that we're making and setting goals in the right place. We're also tracking progress in other areas that are related to but can be measured separately from student academic achievement, like culture and climate of school buildings, graduation rates, suspension reduction, and student attendance. And you heard a little bit about that in the video, because these are goals that are continuing into this second year of implementation. I think the most important thing for Tulsa parents and guardians and families and community members to know, that when these results for the district and school level are released tomorrow, that these are not a reflection of our students' capabilities. They are reflecting where we are right now, and they're importantly, setting us on a path for where we need to be. We know that every single child in Tulsa Public Schools has extraordinarily high potential, and we're confident that they will be able to rise to the challenge with our support, with these new standards especially, and that we'll continue to make academic gains based on measures that matter most. So I want to send a message also to our teachers. Our teachers work unbelievably hard. I mean, unless you've been a teacher or married to one or the child of one, it's really hard to wrap your head around the volume and the complexity of the work they do every day. And they're just pouring their heart and soul into what happens in our classrooms. And so hearing this news or seeing these results can potentially be discouraging, because the bar is higher, the work itself is higher, and the bar also is higher. So two things happened at the same time. We don't want anyone to be discouraged. This does not mean a setback in performance. It's actually instead moving us forward along a path that we are already aspiring to be on. And importantly, look at the results that we talked about in this video. The gains that we've seen in student achievement, the gains that we've seen in graduation rates, the increases that we've seen in student engagement in school and in class. There are really positive things that are happening, and that's due to the incredibly hard work of people all across the district. So this is information, but I don't want anyone to feel discouraged by these changes. We are making progress, and we are on the right track. So in terms of these assessment results, I think it's really important that we don't look at it as a setback. This is a completely new tool, completely new results. They cannot be compared to the past. It's like essentially setting a new level of expectation. I do, at the same time, think that it's really important, because it's always important right now, to acknowledge the added challenge that we have in Oklahoma to helping our students perform successfully, and especially helping them to perform at a level of college and career readiness, because of the dramatic lack of investment that our state has in our schools. This is a decades-long problem that has continued to fester here in Oklahoma, and in the last decade, when we have made the unfortunate decisions that have resulted in additional decreases to an already underfunded system, it makes it extraordinarily difficult for all of us to be able to meet these high expectations. Now, we're going to rise to the challenge. We're going to continue working tirelessly to make it happen, and I'm confident that Team Tulsa is going to do that. But when we say as a state that we want to have our students performing at a college and career-level expectation, we must follow that up by at least a minimally adequate investment in our students. And our teachers must receive a professional wage that reflects the incredible people they are and the talented professionals they are and the level of work that they put into their classrooms every day. So we must acknowledge that and address it. I want to again ask everyone to reach out and make your voices heard. As you know, we are in somewhat of a special session. We are confident that this is going to come back together, and work is going to continue to happen, because it has to. And so we need to make our voices heard. Our state legislators, I know, want to do the right thing, and they're looking for the right solutions. We need them to know that our expectation is that whatever those solutions are, they result in an increased investment in public schools and higher salaries for our teachers. So if you don't know your legislator, legislators, you can find out at www.oklegislature.gov to find them. The best thing and the easiest thing to do is to call, tell your friends, call again tomorrow, make sure they know that our expectation is a sustainable and adequate funding stream for public education, not just to restore where we've been, but to truly invest in our schools and give our children a brighter path forward. So we have new standards, we have new expectations, and we are ready to rise to the challenge. And that concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Gist. Before the board adjourns to executive session this evening, I'm going to ask if there's any new business to discuss. No new business this evening. So before we adjourn to executive session, we're going to hear from speakers who signed up to speak this evening. And we will begin with Ms. Annette Abbott.
Superintendent Gist.
Proceed.
And members of the board. Can you hear me? In 2014, I submitted an application to the Tulsa Public Schools. My primary focus was a thought of perhaps running for state superintendent, which is currently not an option because of how busy I am. But it provided me with perspective and focus on Tulsa Public Schools and the current status of this situation regarding the teachers and the classrooms. I went ahead and pursued that application, and so part-time, I work as a teacher when there are classrooms that are open that need me. And I've been in classrooms in almost every district now, and in almost, I can tell you, I know most of the new teachers. I know most of the teachers that have been there for a while. And I'm incredibly impressed with Burrows. I'm incredibly impressed with Jones, incredibly impressed with Hoover, incredibly impressed with Perry, incredibly impressed with Edison and their technology program, and Thoreau and their business programs. So I've become incredibly familiar with the status and the situation. So this is a request to the board and to the superintendent to please provide us with information and be a little more transparent regarding your salary. I'm not an advocate for decreasing a salary that belongs to a superintendent for the state of Oklahoma. And in fact, I think it's fairly in line with what it should be nationwide, even though you're currently at the 90 percentile. One of my concerns might be that we have little room to go up at this point somewhere in the future. My concern is also the bonuses, two of which you've already given back. It's not clear to me how those bonuses are evaluated. For example, I don't know if you're on a three-to-five objective program, and if 3% of that is met, then you get 100% of the bonus, as opposed to 60% of the bonus. It's just completely unclear to me, and maybe as a guest teacher or as a teacher in the public school system, I haven't done enough research to understand that. But I know that that is also above average, and when we're looking at an above-average salary already, with above-average bonuses that are being returned to the schools, I think those bonuses need to be reevaluated. There are schools out there in which the superintendent has a salary such as yours, and their bonuses are considered, you know, $2,000 to $3,000 to $4,000 to $5,000 per objective. We don't have that information. I don't have that information. I've requested it through your office. So that's one of the concerns I have. The other concern I have is you have an expense account and a home office account. That amount of income that comes back into your pocket, I'm concerned about that, because there's overlapping. You're already getting paid for some of that and a couple of other options. I think your $18,000 for your cellphone and your car allowance is probably appropriate. I believe that in the current state of affairs regarding technology, and let me just give you some of my background, so you know I'm not just a concerned citizen employee of TPS. I opened up a technology company in 1999. This was a multimillion-dollar company in which I wrote a grant for $100,000 and received. I had more than 14 employees at one point, which I had to lay off, because our state wasn't quite ready for the technology. And I currently own a lot of that technology and own patents and trademarks and copyrights and all of that. So I'm not ignorant there. I've been in the technology business for more than 25 years, starting out at Memorex Telx. I've also been in the education industry for more than 25 years. I started out at Cherokee as a student-teacher, and then went to Penn Elementary, where I became one of that 50% attrition, because it was so incredibly stressful to be at that school back in that time. It's been years. So I'm re-entering that direction. My request also to you is that when a teacher says that they need support, and I'm talking to you regarding all of our teachers, it isn't just support. It isn't implementing help, although that...
Ms. Abbott, yes, your time is up. Please conclude your statement.
My final request is that you create evaluation, start a marketing plan to create evaluation for your teachers. It isn't just support. They want to know they're valued, and the only way you can value them is with a salary increase. And I can tell you from my perspective, currently, I have a contract, and I don't even get paid what my contract says I should get paid, as a part-time teacher. So we're trying to address that. But you need to create a valuation program for your teachers. I don't care if it's a four-year program, a five-year program, or a three-year program, but something so that our businesses begin to evaluate the status of the valuation for our teachers, so that individuals out in the community, not at the state level, because they already know the value of our teachers.
Ms. Abbott, thank you.
All right.
I'll call on our next speaker, Mr. Wes Mitchell, Vice Chairman of Education and Workforce for the Tulsa Regional Chamber.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I'll be brief. Publius Saurus, one of Cicero's contemporaries in the first century, I think said it best. Anyone can hold a helm when the waters are calm. Dr. Gist and I have had this conversation. As Vice Chair of Education and Workforce for the Tulsa Regional Chamber, I've had the honor of working with all of the superintendents in the regions, as well as the college presidents in the regions and staff. Dr. Gist's leadership in this community is evident by the respect and admiration she's garnered from her peers. I think that's one great measurement of a great leader. As we continue with violent seeds, when the value of common education is under attack to its very core, we have to have great leadership. After an exhaustive national search, this board made an outstanding choice in selecting Dr. Gist as CEO of Tulsa Public Schools. The board showed an unwavering commitment to providing world-class leadership for TPS. She graciously accepted the helm when the waters were not calm. Her voracious leadership ability to encourage necessary change while building an outstanding world-class leadership team to educate our children for the 21st century and beyond is admirable. Keeping her leadership in place is paramount to the success of this district and Northeast Oklahoma region, but more importantly, to the business outcomes our children and business community deserve. Workforce readiness and post-secondary education readiness. Dr. Gist understands the perspective of the business community, that graduation is not the end, but the beginning. I use the adjective "great" in describing Dr. Gist, and I hope I've shown you the traits that lead up to that word. Colin Powell, when he was head of our country, said, a bunch of generals got together with him and said, you know, you're going to be a pretty good leader. We've watched you, you're going to be pretty good. He said, but when you really become great, your troops will follow you into battle just to see how you're going to get them out of it. What I heard from this presentation earlier, and what I hear from her peers and her staff, is they will follow her in the battle to see how she gets along. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Our final speaker this evening is Mr. Matt Newman.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, and Dr. Gist. I have a common theme with the previous speaker, Wes. I will not be as eloquent. He is a very eloquent speaker, but a very common theme. I spoke in front of this board many months ago and talked about, kind of from a businessman's perspective. My name is Matt Newman. I work for a company called Covanta. I'm also honored to serve as the Chair of the Foundation for Tulsa Schools. So as Wes alluded to just a moment ago, your training and teaching and educating and preparing future employees for Covanta and the many employers in our area, we depend heavily upon you to have these students ready for the workforce and ready for continued education. To continue in that business theme, in these trying times, we need a very, very strong leader and a very strong CEO, and Dr. Gist is that strong leader that we need in these trying times. So fully support, as we move into executive session, I hope that you will take my comments with you in the discussion and in support of Dr. Gist. And if there's any other questions, you guys know how to get ahold of me, and I would love to answer those. Thank you for the, I left three and a half minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. At this time, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss the employment of Dr. Deborah Gist as Superintendent of Schools as authorized by Title 25, Section 307B1 of the Oklahoma State... 307B1 of the Oklahoma Statutes.
So moved to the second.
With that, I'll call for the vote, Ms. Fait.
Aye.
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 Aye. Adjourned for executive session.